We are going to do item 55 first, which should take just a couple of minutes. We have some folks here that we can let go and then we'll come back to the item 54 that might take a little more time. So having said that, let's, Kat, we're going to item 55, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda item number 55 is a proposed Tax Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act resolution for issuance by the Pinellas County Health Facilities Authority of its healthcare facilities refunding and revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $23 million on behalf of Mies Life Incorporated. No correspondence has been received related to this item. The matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Thank you, Kat. Barry, maybe you could just briefly explain the purpose, our purpose in being involved in Tefra?
Yeah, the Tefra hearing, this is actually, so you appoint the Health Facilities Authority, they then review these requests, this is to comply with tax exempt status and the refunding amount per the federal code. And so these boards that you appoint, I sent you a memo earlier because there's four different areas in which you appoint boards that oversee and look at cases that come before them. They actually have a checklist that they have, that they have to comply with the federal law regarding that. And as long as they do that, then that, again, they're able to certify that these bonds can be released. This puts no, it's not against the county's credit or anything, there's no risk to the county, but it does require your approval.
Okay. Does any, do any of the commissioners have any questions on this? The folks from Mies Life, you're here, you've heard the explanation, do you all have any comments that you need to make on that, on this behalf? Okay. Do I have a motion on this? Move approval from Commissioner Flowers, second from Commissioner Gerard. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, did you?
It's a public hearing.
I didn't have any comments. That's why I asked, I asked if you guys wanted to, if you'd like to come up.
Yeah, yeah, we're open hearing.
Okay. You sure you don't want to? You're more than welcome to come up and say.
No, we got other things to do.
Okay, all right. All right. That passed unanimously. All right, we're going to back up to number, item 54, which is a motion to vacate. Kat?
Thank you. Agenda item number 54 is a legislative petition to vacate submitted by Robert D. Saner, Jennifer L. Saner, Ben Warren Gillen, Molly Glazer, 2013-1 I H. Borrower LP, and Jeffrey L. Gray to vacate the south 260 feet of 18th Street, which lies north of and adjacent to the north right-of-way of Georgia Avenue, as well as east of block 79 and west of block 78 in the map of Sutherland. The public hearing was properly advertised, an affidavit of publication has been received for filing, letters of no objection have been received, as with Spectrum advising that the petitioner would bear the expense of any required relocation of its facilities. All interested parties have been notified as to the date of the public hearing. No correspondence has been received and the matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Thank you, Kat. Blake?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be back in front of you again. My name is Blake Line, I'm the Director of Building and Development of your services.
I think he meant that.
I actually do. This stuff's interesting to me.
He did.
All right, so the, I'm going to try to be brief, I know it's, I know you've got a few more items on your agenda. This subject property and their petition to vacate is up in the Palm Harbor area. As you can see here, it's just to the, to the west of US 19. Georgia Avenue is the southern portion of the east-west configuration, and then Florida is on the northern side. And if you, those of you that are familiar with the area, you may recall this is the town of Sutherland Platte, it's the old 1912 platte, and there's a very established grid system that exists there. The majority of those typical blocks are about 600 feet in width by about 250 feet in depth, kind of north to south. And the situation that we have in this particular set of circumstances is that block that is between Georgia to the south and Florida to the north, if you start at 16th on the west side of it, you would, the typical rhythm would see the block increments be those 600-foot lengths. 17th was vacated back in 1981, and so effectively what you have is now a 1,200-foot length of a block. What is being requested is the vacation of 18th Street over here, which would effectively result in a 1,900-foot-long block length. And part of why the county staff has taken objection to this is when we did our land development code revisions in 2019, one of the things that we discussed with you all and with the general public at large is trying to have pedestrian access, walkability within those neighborhoods, and we established through the code development process what those maximum block lengths were, and they deviated based on what the different zoning districts are. In this particular scenario, we have R2, 3, and 4, and the recommended block length for those jurisdictions really, really derives at trying to get to a much more appropriate, like 900-foot block length. In fact, the largest block length that the code allows for is 1,200 feet. So the request to go 1,900 feet really becomes kind of a super block, and part of that code section really looks at those pedestrian access points, those connection points to allow people golf carts through, you know, various things like that, to encourage people to not be kind of auto-dependent. And so we start to see that. A lot of times what we, what we hear in these types of situations is, well, you know, is the county have any plans for it, is there building anything? And one of the things I just wanted to draw your attention to while this graphics up on here is we had Florida Avenue, which is along the air, and we had the development, Florida did not continue through at that point prior to the development of these six or seven lots that were here. And so with that new development, that roadway grid was connected. And so part of the position, both from the BDRF staff, public work staff, in planning, excuse me, housing and community development staff, was to try to really encourage that pedestrian activity and not to, not to support the overall super block length. The other portion that, that exists, so this is when we hone in a little bit more on Georgia to the south, you can see Florida to the north, and the portion in blue with the kind of diagonal hashing is the, is the right-of-way that exists that's there, and then the four petitioners around that. We also don't look as favorably on those requests when they become as a result of a enforcement action, when people take it upon themselves to encroach out into the right-of-way and do that. And so that's part of what we have in this circumstance. It might not be as easy to see in this one, but essentially what you have is the property owner here has extended their improvements about 20 feet into that right-of-way, fenced it in, have paving, have jet skis, and a trailer, and a shed, and then the one up here on the, the property owner up here on the north in the purple has extended the yard out into the right-of-way, also has a couple sheds, a couple boats, and has effectively privatized the public access. And so it's, you know, no longer, you don't feel appropriate when you're trying to access and utilize, you know, that cut-through if that's your desire to do so. So the request was to, to try to address those code violations through vacation of the right-of-way. One of the other points of contention that we have here, and so you can see on, on this example, and I'll put it up here, that's the existing improvements that extend about 20 feet out into the right-of-way, and then you can see the other sheds and boats that are there. The other issue that we have, and although our public county, our Pinellas County Utilities Group would be sufficient with an easement, we do have an existing water line that runs through that right-of-way as well. So we would want to protect and maintain our ability to service that existing water So this is a, an example looking at the, from Georgia looking north, about the 60-foot right-of-way, the utility pole being somewhat in that area. And then you can see in the back portion over here where the fence and where this van is located has been extended onto the right-of-way and privatized that use of that right-of-way. And then looking from the Florida looking south, again, a lot of the vegetation that has been constructed or installed here is also in the right-of-way. There's a couple sheds in the right-of-way and then some boats that are parked there, and some of the rear, rear yard improvements. So similar, not too dissimilar to what we saw with the Mueller vacation, we've got somebody privatizing, you know, the right-of-way. So as we typically show you with this, the county departments were curried, we do have objections to that. Evan Johnson's here from the Housing and Community Development Staff to speak if you have any questions of their concerns, and you know that Kelly's already here. The utility providers did not really have any concerns if there's a, if the applicants bear the expense of relocating their utilities and/or if the easements provided to Pinellas County for the water line that's there. This is one of those applications that started, kind of stopped a little bit because of the pandemic responses, and then we're trying to clean some of these up and bring them back to you. So that's why you're seeing the delayed timeline in responding to some of these. So with that, the recommendation for us is we really don't, from a staff perspective, didn't want to encourage and incentivize the super block. We feel like it does impede the pedestrian viability of the neighborhood, and we do have the concern about people asking for forgiveness rather than permission. So with that, I'll conclude my comments. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
What's the width, the width of that right-of-way?
60 feet.
60 feet.
And the water line is on the eastern portion of that 60 feet.
Any questions from commissioners at this point? Yeah, Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So prior to their improvements that they made on their property, was it a, was it a walking path that the community used? Do we know? Was it, was it kind of a neighborhood path kind of thing?
Yeah, I mean, it had, it had, you know, probably some utilization of people kind of cutting through. I think that's been part of the concern is that, you know, those that, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the neighbors, but the concern of somebody walking through there and do they belong, and what is their intentions and those kinds of things. But it does, it does provide some access.
It reminds me more of that one in High Point.
That's the one I was thinking of too, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mid, down near P-Tech where they were cutting, yep. Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions before we get to the applicant? I see there's multiple applicants here. Do we have somebody who's going to do the presentation? Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. And I want to apologize in advance that the notification that both myself and the other petitioners were given did not provide information that we needed to give seven days in advance of our presentation for this, for this petition to vacate hearing. So I have a presentation, but I just don't have the ability to put it on the screen. So I have a paper copy that I could send back to the clerk, if that's okay with the, with the commission board.
That's fine.
Okay. And then I have a digital copy that I can read off of while we.
And you'll, and you'll have 20 minutes.
Okay, thank you. So as Director Blake, I believe is, is his first name, has already presented that we have filed for a petition to vacate for the road right-of-way between Florida and Georgia. My name is Ben Gillen, B-E-N-G-I-L-L-E-N. I live at 1804 Florida Avenue. I've resided there for a little over 10 years, and this road of right-of-way has been vacant for the, for the time that I've been there. When I purchased the property, there was an existing shed that was over the property line on the road right-of-way. I've since then replaced that shed with a new improved shed, and, and that was one of the causes for the code enforcement that Director Blake had mentioned. So in theory, the, the structure that was, that was there when I purchased the home was there, I just have since improved it. And, and to the point that I have, you know, put, stored my, my vessel there and planted landscaping, but all improvements to that road right-of-way. And that was really the reason why we filed a petition to vacate was because at some point somebody decided that it was, it was a code infraction and that we needed to take care of it. So that's really where we are. You know, the, the opportunity to file for a petition to vacate, which was denied based off of a super block. The, the, the street to the west of us, 17th Street, was mentioned that it was vacated back in 81, I believe, and that's really hence why we have this super block issue. And unfortunately, due to the pandemic, the, the, the code that was passed in 2019, you know, denying that due to a super block was kind of done in the middle of, during our petition to vacate process, which is really unfortunate. Across Georgia, on the south side of the road right-of-way, that was vacated as well. So that, that went through. I don't know the year that that was vacated, I feel like it was in the early 2000s. And then across the street from my house on Florida is still a road right-of-way. My neighbor Jim Ross, who's here today, has actually had a utilization permit for that piece of property where he has actually a paved driveway going up to his, his garage in the back. Both myself, if you can see, am I able to use the presentation provided by the county?
The county, yes, we can, we can pull that back up. So hold on, let, let them do that.
Okay, so actually, we'll start here. So, oh, okay, thank you.
Are you moving it or are they moving it?
I'm not moving it.
Okay, hold on.
I don't think, is it on slide?
No, if you use the red one, that'll do the laser pointer.
Okay.
The four narrow faces.
Oh, maybe it's sensitive, okay. All right, thank you. So this is Georgia going east to west, and this is the road right-of-way going north to south. This is the northern view, and the gentleman, Jeffrey Gray, on the right-hand side, I can remember his address, he has a, a garage in his back of his property that he would need to access in order to get to, to his garage. So this is the view facing south on Florida, this is my home on the left, and I have to pull onto this road right-of-way and to get to my garage on the left-hand side. So the, the, the road right-of-way is being utilized by the homeowners, myself and my neighbors that are being, that, that actually need access to their homes. And then I don't have a picture of it, but directly across the street on the northern side is my neighbor Jim Ross, who has the utilization permit that was granted, I believe, in 98. I have a copy of that utilization permit as well. As has been mentioned, there was no objections from any of the, the utility companies, and the, the water department, I believe it's Public Works, asked for a 10-foot easement over the water main that runs about, I think it's like 10 foot off of my property line through, and then there's, you can see where that red line ends right here is pretty much where the water main is. So I'm going through there, but I, I'm good with the pictures now, thank you. So I want to thank the board for, for listening to our, our plight for the, you know, the petition to vacate. Really, we just want to be able to use the property. We've been maintaining the property ever since we've owned it. We cut the grass, we maintain the, the actual physical look of this property. We do, we do not have pedestrians that drive through there, no golf carts drive through there, nobody walks through there besides us. If somebody needed to get through there, that's fine, we have no objection to that. But we just wanted to be able to utilize what is there, what was there when we bought the homes, and since we've then improved. So with that, I'm, I'm through with my presentation, open it up for questions if there's any needing.
Okay. Any questions for the, for the applicant? Do you have any? Just real quickly on the, on your driveway use, did, was that all permitted, that the driveway to access your garage, or how, how, how would you get into your garage? So, I was just curious.
Go ahead. On the northern side of, of the right-of-way, there are actually, a small portion of it has been improved. So if you were coming from Florida, you could turn onto 18th Street for about, and I'm going to make an estimate here, but probably about 50 feet, which then provides access into his drive, into his garage. So that, there is a portion of it on the north side that actually has some improvement.
So on the edge of that driveway, is it, there's room to the, to the west?
Correct. And that would be entirely, I mean, that's what the right-of-way is for, is to provide access to the garage, so that was, you know, would be the intended use.
I got you. So, so there's room to allow walkways on the west side of that driveway?
Correct, yeah. That driveway does not, as it exists today, does not take up the full 60 feet of right-of-way.
Thank you. If I figured out to ask the question that way, that was what I really wanted to know. Thank you, Blake.
And I can't remember the term that's used for that entranceway, and the county had mentioned that, there's a, a term that you, you all use for when you're coming off of a street and introducing a, a parallel street, or perpendicular street, I'm sorry. And there's a, I can't remember the term that's used, but that is not on the other side of, of Georgia. There is not one of those introductions coming onto, to 18th Street on the, on the Georgia side.
Yeah, it's, it's essentially, there's a, on Florida, there's a curb return that provides a stub out, and then essentially it picks up this gentleman's driveway and then continues into the garage. What's, what's at discussion, I guess, is whether or not, you know, if you were going to build that roadway, you'd have to extend the full thing. He'd still maintain access to his garage, that wouldn't be the case if the county ever wanted to come through and, and improve that right-of-way entirely, they would still have access to all of those properties, both his property and the gentleman to the south that has the garage in the back that he was referring to.
Got it, okay. Any, any other questions for the, of the applicant? Otherwise, there's a couple other folks that wanted to speak. You'll have 14 minutes if you need it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Robert Saner, and then Matt Ionati.
Good evening, commissioners, how you doing? Rob Saner, 1785 Georgia Avenue. Ben stated pretty much everything that I wanted to discuss. I know, obviously, yes, we did go out into the right-of-way, so we are guilty of that. He had a shed on his side. I did have two sheds when I moved in my house on, in 2007, and the fence was already over on a property survey. Again, I did go out a little further, so I understand that part of it. As far as reiterating one thing about, he was talking about the entryway coming in from Florida, again, on the other side, there is none. Speaking with my neighbors across the way, which would be on Georgia, on the southbound side, there was a 60-foot right-of-way at, at that, at one time that runs, I know, six, seven houses down, that was closed when they, when they actually did the development one block behind Georgia going south. So there's a development there. So I don't know, I don't know the timeline that that was closed and so forth. I just appreciate you having the time to take, you know, to listen to us tonight, to see what options we have, if any, and I do appreciate your time today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Robert. Okay, Matt, you still here? Yeah, come on up, Matt.
Good evening. Matt Ionuzzi, I reside 1770 Florida Avenue. Been there for about seven years now. First off, appreciate the, the board taking us, listening to the concerns of the community, serving the community, appreciate all that. I'm not involved in the, in the vacate request, I will gain nothing by it. I'm simply a neighbor that has seen the property owners who, properties are but against the right-of-way. They've maintained the property, quite frankly, they've made improvements to it in ways that have benefited the community. It, it would be a sight for sore eyes if there was a 60-foot weed-infested area, they mowed it. They've mowed it, they've, to, I think the director was saying there was improvements to the entranceway to Ben's property of about 50 feet, about 10 feet, um, in, in, in all reality of the concrete. Ben since shelled it. It's not just a sandy, open lot, basically, in the middle of the community. So do appreciate that. It is a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood. I would say, I walk my dog two, three times a week, or a, a week, I'm sorry, two, three times a day. My son, his friends, they're in the neighborhood, they're constantly out on the street, a lot of bikers, a lot of runners in the area. We have had no problems with that, with that right of way, basically, just being a grass area. There's been vacates requests granted for other blocks in the area. Again, no issues with any of that. The golf cart use, the, the, I believe it was about a year ago, permitted golf cart use in downtown Palm Harbor, that right actually stops two blocks away from where this right-of-way vacate request is. So again, unless something was to change in the future, that would not be of a concern now.
It will.
Again, they've been good stewards of the neighborhood, they've been good stewards of, of the property. Understand there were some, you know, things going on as far as was it done beforehand or after. Again, I would ask that you approve the vacate request, allow the property owners continue maintaining the properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And that's, that's all I had. I don't have anybody else, so. Oh, I'm sorry.
Someone wants to speak also.
Did you, I, did you fill out a blue card?
Fill one out.
Okay, come on up. I'll, I'll, I'll find it here. Oh, wait a minute, James Ross?
Yes.
Yeah, I put it in the wrong place, sorry.
My name is James Ross. I live at 1811 Florida Avenue, directly across the street from Ben Gillen. And in 1998, I had the portion of 18th Street vacated so I could put a driveway into a garage I built in my backyard. And I had no problem getting that vacated. And I have paperwork here stating that it's approved, um, approved driveway deemed private to me. And I've been living there 32 years. And that property before Ben moved in and Rob was always grass growing up to here, and people never walked through that area. No golf carts ever go through that area. We have sidewalks, and all the people that walk their dogs, they stay on the sidewalks, and nobody ever goes through that area. So they've improved the look of the area since they moved in, keeping it mowed and keep adding, adding some shrubbery and making it look good for the area. So I have no problem with them getting that vacated, if you guys see fit for that to happen. And that's all I got to say is, got any questions for me?
Thank you, appreciate it. I don't, I don't see any questions right now. Thank you, Jim, appreciate it.
All right. One other thing, my, my property was vacated on, on 18th, and then the other side that they talked about was vacated. And then that center section is what they're trying to get vacated. So both ends have been vacated, except that center section.
Both ends of 18th?
Yes.
To the north of Florida and to the south of Georgia?
Right.
Completely vacated, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we may have staff come up and comment, but thank you, James, appreciate it.
Thank you.
As a point of clarification on that last comment, so north of Florida, 18th is intact up to Nebraska and for, and northern of that.
So none of it has been vacated?
So, so that portion of it, I, I'm curious to get a little more clarity on this, because 18th Street is intact going, again, from Florida going north towards, towards Nebraska and beyond. As it comes further south from Georgia, it's not in existence there. There's another subdivision, and, and there's a road that's offset that's referred to as Harbor Circle. So that's, 18th stops at, at Georgia going south.
Okay.
So I just wanted to be clear about, about that.
So, so, so what, did he have, how did he, what was?
I would like to understand a little bit more about that. I think what, I think what might be referencing is the right-of-way utilization. Maybe I can see your paperwork, if you don't mind.
Let's see, they deemed it private, and it's also on the paper.
Yeah, this is a, it's a utilization permit, so, so it is a, a right to use the existing right-of-way, it's not a vacation. So it says in here, it was, this was issued in September 28th, 1998. It says, "We are enclosing your approved utilization permit covering the proposed construction described below." And it talks about construction of a 12-foot-wide asphalt driveway within the unimproved right-of-way of 18th Street. So it is, gentleman's correct, Mr. Ross is correct, that he does have the right to build his driveway, taking access off of 18th, but it's not a vacation of 18th. So there's a little.
So there is, there is.
A little nuance there that I would clarify.
And there's, there's ways to get through on 18th Street?
Yes.
Okay.
Well.
No, it's all.
Where, where he is between Florida and Georgia was the, was the portion that we're describing where it's not improved.
No, no, I'm talking about north of Florida.
North of Florida, yes.
After my driveway, north of Florida, it's all woods.
Okay.
It's woods, all trees.
So this portion of Flor- Florida up to?
Nebraska.
Nebraska.
This portion right here, it's all wood, wooded area.
But it, but it's still open right-of-way, is what I'm?
Yes.
Okay. No, just trying to, continuity.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Blake?
No.
Any questions for Blake? Okay, and I think we.
Just, what, maybe. So the, the improvements without permission notwithstanding, if they had come looking for a utilization permit similar to the neighbors to the north have, would that be something that would probably be looked at favorably?
I think, um, I don't want to speak entirely for the different departments, certainly where the biggest point of contention might be is access to the existing water line that's there. So as I was alluding to, and you saw earlier in the presentation, the water line is, is further to, in the east portion of the right-of-way. Pete, I don't know if you can bring the presentation back up, but I can share with you. So Commissioner, to your point, could there be an opportunity to look, you know, elsewhere on this, on the property? Can we go, oop, that's off, no wonder. There you go. I'm good. All right, so let me, so what I wanted to show, show you all here is the blue line running north and south is what represents the existing water line. And as you can see, it, it hugs the, the far east side of that existing right-of-way. So to the Commissioner's point and the question, could we do a right-of-way utilization permit, you know, for some of that? Typically, those right-of-way utilization permits are for driveways, utility connections, you know, fences. Typically, it's not a privatization of a public, like parking or a shed or something along those lines.
So, and maybe this is for the applicants, they're not really, they're not planning any other things on the property. This is, the vacation request is a way of alleviating?
The code enforcement violation.
Code enforcement violations. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it, and, and if you know, maybe you know that you could walk through there, but if you're new to the area and you saw that, there's no way you would think this is public access with the, you know, the greens and the shed and everything else blocking. You kind of have to go around if you wanted to have access.
And I apologize if I misspoke earlier, but the, part of what we're asked as a staff to look at is both current use and future utilization. So when we talk about golf cart or pedestrian access, we're also trying to think ahead to what, you know, what might be the interest of the community looking forward as well.
Anything else? Okay. Yeah, and, and the gentleman said that the golf carts go to 16th Street now, but we, we'll be bringing something back in January that moves the golf carts to 19th Street, just, just so you know. But they, they travel mostly east-west to get to downtown, just as an aside. What's the will of the commission? I heard one of the, one of the folks say, and I guess you still have 14 minutes on your, on the presenter, but you had no issues with people walking through there. So is there any type of, like, a, you know, if we gave the vacation, like, an easement, not only for the utilities, but for a walkway for people to, it's a little bit more inviting to Commissioner Justice's point. Right now, I wouldn't want to walk through there, I would think it was private property.
And, and one of the things, if I may, and I should have put this in the presentation in hindsight, but we've got a provision within the code, and I have copies I can provide to everybody if necessary, but we look at the pedestrian access. Do you need the full 60 feet of right-of-way to have the pedestrian access? No, that's certainly not incumbent upon that. Could you do something less than that with, you know, golf carts? If that's the intent and the desire, absolutely. It's a question of where that gets placed and how that gets designed and, and how we go forward and utilize that. But that's really what the goal and intent was from, and I don't want to speak on behalf of Evan, but that's really where the discussion comes in, is how to create that pedestrian connectivity and, and some of those other details and desirable elements for the community.
On that, on that east side where the water line is, is that, is that the, is that where, if you were going to provide a walkway access, is that what, you'd want to double up with the?
You could certainly double up to that extent to provide access to that, you could meander it through there. One of the challenges that exists, and you see it a little bit on, on this dynamic, is the improvements, oh, my apologies, it's my kid's bedtime. So the, the improvements that have occurred here on Mr. Saner's property extend about 20 feet out into the right-of-way on, on that side, on the west, the west side of there. And then you've got a, a little bit of a pinch point here where there's an existing shed, actually, there's two in this aerial photograph. And then Mr. Gillen's property, he has a, some improvements in the rear yard that extend out into the right-of-way. Not, not the pool that's located roughly in that proximity, but some of the rear yard improvements. So you might find yourself suited to not have it just directly, but if we were to try to do something to meander, but that doesn't address the, the water line issues. Now, currently, there's no permanent encroachments over the water line. In other words, the pool's not built over the water line or anything of those natures. It is just the, the rear yard improvements, the fence, and some of the shed.
But if those water, if there was water line issue there, we'd have to remove those properties, those, those improvements.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah. Did you have anything?
Okay. And you have 14 minutes left.
Okay, thank you.
So you can respond to anything that's been said or whatever else you'd like to use the time for.
And to the point of, of your discussion about the water line and that there was anything that needed to be accessed through that, you know, the structures that are there, they're movable. It's a, it's a fence, it's a shed. When I, when I replaced the shed, they brought it in with a, with a forklift and they put it down. It, 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 it's, it's a movable structure. Anything that's there can be moved. It's just, you know, it was there when we bought the house, we just improved it. And, and, and we, at the time, we just didn't think that there was anything wrong with that, but come to find out that being that it was over the property line is worthy of code enforcement came into play. The, the access to the property, it, it's, 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 it's public land, it's, it's the road right-of-way, so we have no issues with, if, if there were to be some type of, you know, agreement for access to that, I would, I would, I would actually promote that. I would like to see people have access to that and go through that if they, if, if, you deem fit.
Okay. Any, what's the wish of the commission? Blake, on, on, to the point that the gentleman just raised, I mean, the willingness to, I, I guess the idea would be to have, you know, the vacation with a utility easement, maintain the utility easement, but also a access easement of some?
Typically, if we were going to pursue that direction, we would want a, a utility easement. I'd want to confer and see if we needed a drainage easement, and then a, and then a access easement. So that would be a kind of a dual, a multipurpose easement. I wouldn't want to create that here and now for you, but we can certainly look at that if that's the will of the commission, and we can, we can go that direction.
Thank you.
And one other thing to bring up, and I don't know if this is an option, if the, if the vacation is, is, you know, heartburn, so to speak, for, for the, for the, for the board and, and the county, is there any other options, whether it be through a utilization permit or some type of variance, where it's not our property, you know, it wasn't vacated to us, but we were able to utilize it? Should you guys need to come in there and do something to that property with the understanding that we, we would, we would need to do whatever we needed to do?
As we've talked, discussed in, in previous cases, a right-of-way utilization permit is a vehicle that we can utilize. Typically, it's for temporary, non-permanent things, so to the comment that it's a, a shed, a fence, parking of recreational, like jet skis and RVs and things of that nature, it, it presents a really challenging situation because it's, again, it gets to the privatization of a public use, and that, that becomes troublesome or problematic. Can it, we, can we do it for instances like a driveway? That's usually when we use that, that type of tool.
Okay, thank you. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it, it does. And, and to that point, there, there is, there is access needed to the gentleman behind me for his garage, and there's access needed for my property as well on that road right-of-way. So, you know, if the utilization permit is an option, same thing for Rob. If Rob wanted to get to his backyard and he wanted to put a, 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 a permitted structure behind his house to access it through that road right-of-way, he, you know, he, we would need to utilize that as well, so.
And that option is fully in existence with it being right-of-way? That doesn't, doesn't preclude it?
So Blake, I guess really, to, to the gentleman's comment about right-of-way utilization permits, which you can address, then really it's just about taking the sheds?
It's about taking the, the, I mean, yes, the, the driveway access, we have no problem with that. It's, what becomes an issue is the sheds, the, the parking of, or outdoor storage of equipment, that kind of stuff becomes more of the, the issue and the concern.
So it, going this route, those, those items would need to come out?
They would need to, yes, they would be needing to locate it on their private property.
Okay. Back to the.
And to the point for the future use, I know Director Blake had mentioned that, you know, the, the purpose of the, the county is to, to, to look at the future of what they're going to do with this piece of property, and, and, you know, you mentioned golf carts and access for that reason, and, and I, and I respect that. But you also look, look at the property across the street between Nebraska and Florida, which is unimproved right-of-way. There is a utilization permit on that, so would it behoove the, the county to just put an access between Georgia and Florida and not through the other part? Why, why, why would we want to do that, I guess, is the, is the question? And, you know, I, I think really where we're at with this, and if I'm correct, I'm wrong, the, the reason why we, we would, we would want to deny the petition to vacate from the county standpoint is based off of a super block, which was a, a code that was passed in 2019, basically not allowing 1,900 feet versus 1,200 feet. So really, we're asking for, for, for grace on 600 feet of, of a block for, 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 for access that really nobody's using and hasn't used since 1912, when this plot was made. So that, that's, that's just the, the, the one point that I would like to, to, to make in addition.
Okay. You were okay with it until we started talking about the sheds, I guess. The sheds are what, kind of throw it a little bit for you? I mean, the storage sheds are, I mean, because we were talking about a, a utilization permit.
Yeah.
And you were okay with that, and we would still have access, somebody could still meander through if we created a walkway or something. I, I'm not even saying that that's on the plan.
Okay.
But, but then when we talked about, in that case, you wouldn't have to remove, if we just said, if it was a vacation, we wouldn't have to remove any of that.
Right, yeah, we, I mean, obviously, what we would like to see is the, is the vacation of the property.
I understand, that's your petition.
Yeah, yeah.
Evan, could you stop the time there?
Charlie, stop the time.
Okay, thanks, sorry.
Evan Johnson, Planning Division. I just wanted to point a clarification on the ordinance date. That ordinance was passed in July of 2018. It's ordinance 1836, so just.
You talk about the super block?
Yeah, the 2019 reference. I want to make sure that was good.
Okay. 2018. Okay. So, I'm not, yes?
I think that if the northern, the Florida Avenue property, if the greenery and the sheds were moved a little east, and on the southern property, the van or whatever truck that is was not parked on the right-of-way, it'd be much, look much different, and you would have that visual clear path from Florida to Georgia. And they would lose a little bit of the use now, but not all of it. But you'd still have the public access. Because, to my point earlier, you look at that picture and you're not, that's not public property, that's their private property.
So, we're talking about creating a vacation with an easement that, over which the easement doesn't, you don't allow anything in the easement, or?
Whatever the mechanism would be, I'm not looking to see these folks get hammered with fines on stuff that was done before they bought, you know, before they owned, they moved in, they thought the shed was okay, put a shed. I'm not looking to hammer them on that kind of stuff. That doesn't do anybody any good. But if we want a clear sightline from Florida to Georgia with the potential of making a walking path or a golf cart path or a road, then that sightline needs to be cleared up.
I think there's two options maybe I can put forth for your consideration. One is, obviously, if you deny the petition to vacate, we can certainly work with those four property owners to the extent that there's a right-of-way permit, a right-of-way utilization permit for a driveway and vehicular access. That would stop short of the outdoor storage and the sheds and those kind of things. Those would need to be moved onto their private properties. Or the alternative is to grant the petition to vacate and try to create some holdback for easements and, you know, other access points and discussion, whether it's a partial. That's not what's being put in front of you tonight, was an entire vacation. So if the desire is to find a middle ground, we could try to work with them to amend their application to figure out something different. But at this point, it was kind of all or nothing.
Commissioner Gerard.
Well, I guess I agree with Commissioner Justice that unless those things are moved so that you can see from one street to another, it's not ever going to be used. I mean, you've guaranteed that it's not going to be used because you have buildings all over it. And so, you know, if we want to have access, then those things need to move. I understand that the reason they want to do this is so that they don't have, they don't have to move those things. So, and I have to say, it irritates the heck out of me when people come ask for a vacation after they've already built all over or moved things into that property illegally. It just doesn't sit well with me. So, that's all.
Commissioner Seal.
And I agree with Commissioner Gerard because, you know, if you recall, in this similar area, the Mullers had come to us several times when they had built beautiful landscaping and pavers and stuff, and we turned them down because they went into county right-of-way. There were more issues there, if you recall, but I think about that in this similar area and, well, actually, it's a little bit farther away, but I just, I think that I could, what I would probably like to do is, I don't know how we do this, but look at right-of-way utilization, such as a temporary structure, such as a shed, so that in a case like this, that you have some kind of temporary use, that it can be moved, or, you know, some more flexibility in that direction. But I have trouble with allowing the, granting the, granting this petition. And I think there's a different way to approach this, because it's, we're setting precedent. We're doing this for everybody else in that area that, you know, decides they want to plunk a shed down or build a fence or pavers.
Yeah, I was thinking about how you said something in the previous case, that, you talked about the reasons for vacation is there's not any future use of it. So I think about a 20-foot, I think about a vacation with a 20-foot easement in the middle that has to be clear, and then an easement over the utilities in case we have to service them, right? And then you have, they're taking care of the property, and we have an easement for future use if we need it over the middle 20 feet of that right-of-way. So they would have to clear their stuff out of that middle 20 feet, something like that. But, go ahead.
If you were to deny the request that's before you tonight without prejudice, we could certainly come back, we could work with them to amend the application to that, if that's the will of the commission, is to figure out a lesser extent of the request. So it's not the entirety of the 60 feet, but maybe it's, you know, a segment thereof. We could certainly work to do that.
Commissioner.
I would like to make a motion to do exactly what David just said.
Blake?
Blake, sorry. Getting late.
And that was, and that is to come, go ahead and work with them and then bring it back? Is this another date certain?
If you're denying it, then you don't need to.
You can certainly continue it to a date certain, and then we wouldn't have to re-advertise. Or if we don't know what that is, you could certainly deny it, we could work with them to revise the application and then bring it back. You may recall, there was a vacation by Landon Miller where it was a 15-foot right-of-way, and the concern was the neighbors wanted to have the access to the utility poles. It was before you a couple months back. That's an example where you all denied that. He has subsequently revised that application and is going to bring that back with an easement in place of the right-of-way. It's not back in front of you yet, but that's the same mechanism that we're going to use.
So a vacation with an easement, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so instead of vacating it and asking for the property, they're basically asking to vacate it and providing an easement in return. We could look to something to that degree if that's the will.
Can, as the maker of the motion, can you do that between now and when we meet again?
I think your suggestion, Blake, was to, that you deny it with.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice, and that way, they can amend it and bring it back whenever it's ready.
If there's no prejudice, then there's no time delay for them to reapply.
Do you have to re-advertise though?
We would.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to avoid for them.
Yeah. So right now, it's a $750 application, 350 covers the processing of it, and the 400 is the advertising, covers the advertising costs. We could, if we don't have a date certain, at a minimum, we would have to do the re-notification, so it would be an additional $400 to do that.
Could you figure this out by January 25th meeting?
If you give us a, I mean, we can go a date certain and work to that end, yeah.
Then I'm going to remove my second and ask that you make a motion to continue it to January 25th.
And so, to that point, I would like to make a motion to continue this until January 25th?
Second.
2022, yes.
Any other, and you still have time if you want to come and speak.
Thank you for the consideration. I just wanted to just get clarification on the motions that were presented and were, what was seconded. Basically, it was on behalf of the fact that the petition to vacate was denied without prejudice, to where we have the ability to work together for some type of.
You've been continued so that you can work on it?
Okay.
But also with the understanding that you're going to have to figure out your structures and maybe do this 20-foot path.
That'll be part of the discussion.
Okay.
You're going to have to do some compromising here.
Understood.
But not denied.
Okay. And then, do we have a date? We can, just give you, that we can work together before that date, correct? Yep, okay, all right, thank you. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Are we clear on that motion, everybody? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Yes.
Before we go to the next matter, I don't, you know, I, we only hire and fire two employees, but I think in a urban county with as many different issues as we have, it seems like you need to have some kind of committee that gets together and tries to work through all of this. This is for us to be up here trying to put the puzzle pieces together and figure out where there's compromise and where there's ways to make this work. You know how this board thinks, so.
Not after this one, but after the first one, we had that exact discussion with staff. We actually do have the departments coming together, and we have a new coordinator that's bringing, that brings people together. But I think there needs to be a little more senior involvement, because these, you can't negotiate these things out on the floor of the commission.
You can't, and that's where I'm going, so.
That's where that first one, I think, could have been, we could have done a better job with. But there's more pieces to that, because we have an outside city and there's differences of what was said and a year of miscommunication or whatever. So it's not necessarily on, but I don't disagree with your comment.
Thank you.
Commissioner Law?
Well, I just wanted to agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Seal, because I don't feel that the way in which this is being handled currently is fair to the folks that have bought their home and lived in it and, excuse me, been trying to do the best that they can. And number two, as Commissioner Seal alluded, we're sitting here trying to put a puzzle together, and there's a lot of the pieces of the puzzle that just we don't have at our fingertips. And so, let's get all the pieces together and everybody involved on the same page, and then we'll make a decision.
Just one clarification. I don't disagree, and especially regarding the first one, but we always give, you always have the ability as a petitioner to come to the commission. So when staff says, okay, I can't do anymore, you know, this is what you need, and they say, no, I want the full vacation, well, then they take it, they bring it to you, okay? You know, so they have, they're not denying, they're, you know, staff's not holding it up, denying them the opportunity to make their case. But they typically try to resolve those issues if you can find the compromise that's needed. But each individual case is different. I certainly understand that.
Yeah, and we, you know, we're just trying to figure out ways to make things happen instead of, you know, not, you know, not make things happen. And I think that seems to be, you know, a consensus to figure something out that's reasonable.
I understand.
Yeah, but, so we, yes, Commissioner Flowers?
While I agree with what you all are saying, I also hold some of our residents accountable. Just because you see a lot that's been vacant for years and nothing is happening to it does not give you the right to go put something on it. And we've had some cases where some individuals have just made that choice, and then they come to us, and we want to help as much as we can, but we keep changing our current policies right here to accommodate things that they've done that they shouldn't have done. I'm not saying that happens with everyone. This gentleman said that the structure was already there, it was a structure that was not permissible where it was, and he said, it was there, so I just improved it. Well, he didn't improve it, because he said, he purchased a new shed, and they came and used a forklift and brought it in. So he didn't improve it, he purchased a whole nother unit. So maybe we also need to partner in this, just some additional education information, because even for my home, I know where my orange flag say my property line is, my neighbor built their fence and it's on my property. So I could be not nice and say, pull your fence up, or I could just say, I'm not using it anyway, so, you know, you go ahead. But that would be an issue if anything else were to occur when someone else went to move in. So I do agree with everything that we're saying, because we're up here trying to justify some stuff, you know, right here. But I also think, too, that some of our residents have to also do their due diligence when they are doing things versus coming here and trying to get us to figure out how we're going to make their wrong right, if you get what I'm saying.
I, so, I'm sorry, we have a motion and a second. Did we vote? Yeah, we did, thank you. Wow. I'm telling, I'm getting tired already. I'm trying to think, Tarp and Springs meeting, they went to five in the morning. We'd only, we'd only have about eight hours to go. We're not going that long, I promise you. We'd all get up and walk, I'd be here by myself. All right, so we're.
Say cheers and leave.
Exactly. All right, so we're finished with this item. We've got the marching orders, and we are moving on to item 56. Kat?
Agenda item number 56 is a proposed one-year moratorium related to section 14-29 of chapter 14 of the county code. That part of the county code is regarding the expansion of commercial locations engaging in the retail sale of cats and dogs in Pinellas County. The public hearing was properly advertised, an affidavit of publication has been received for filing, four emails in opposition, and two emails in favor of the moratorium have been received. The matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Thank you, Kat. And before we get going down this path, Barry, maybe you can frame what tonight is all about, okay?
So over the last several months, you've had a couple of discussions regarding consideration of a ban on the sale of, the retail sale of pets in expression of concern out of where they procure their pets from puppy mills. There's a lot of different issues on both, from people on both sides of the issue. Staff really needs time to research those, and we have begun that research and reaching out to others that have either considered or done that, along with National Humane Society and others. While they're preparing that, you also asked us to look at putting a moratorium in place to where there wouldn't be an expansion of new stores while we're conducting this review and for you to be able to have time to consider the question. So this would put a moratorium in place to prevent additional stores, and while we bring back to you the body of research for you to consider whether or not you want to ban the sale or limit it in some way.
And I think it also covers the existing owners not adding locations or square footage to their existing site. Is that, oh, where'd she go? Okay. I think that is in here as well, so I just.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So what we're just trying to do is what we have.
Status quo.
Yeah.
Status quo, while we do the research, while you listen to both sides of the argument, and then bring back the question at a later date, and then the moratorium would be removed once you've decided the question.
Okay.
Quick question. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Estimated time of when we would be looking at having this discussion?
Well, I would think in the spring, you know, I mean, I think Doug's done a lot of the research, but I also think that getting that information to you, we want to come and meet with you, get, maybe you have additional questions or additional things you want us to research from what you've heard. We'll take that information, have time to research that before we put it out on, at a public meeting for, you know, discussion.
So I would also make the suggestion for the commissioners that, I mean, I have three or four questions for that study, that if you have questions, that you email those to Barry and Doug, like, now, so that we don't meet with them in late January, and then it takes them weeks to get the information, and it's like, if you have questions about this issue, I think we should kind of, on our part of it, expedite our part of it to give you the questions.
Great idea. So, who is making the presentation for staff? Is that?
We're available to answer questions, but this is.
We're just really wanting a moratorium to.
This is a moratorium, this is a temporary issue. There's no sense in debating the ultimate question prior to. There's no sense in debating the ultimate question prior to, you know, twice, and so, you know, we didn't prepare a presentation because we're going to get into those issues at a later date.
I just want to make sure I'm clear because we have 10 people who want to speak, okay?
Yeah.
And we're not going to be speaking to whether we want them or don't want them, okay? I'm just letting everybody know ahead of time, that's not for tonight. We really are just talking to the issue, which is the moratorium.
Correct.
And there will be, I think that was a great suggestion, that we give you some additional questions that have come up that we need to be looking at in the meantime, but I'm not going to take any more time, I'm just going to go ahead and ask these folks. You do have three minutes, and to the extent that you're dealing with the moratorium issue, we'll allow those three minutes to continue. Dan Cohn? And then Tom De Silva? Good evening.
My name is Dan Cohn, I am owner of Sunshine Puppies and Sunshine Puppies Two. The first one is in Largo, the second one is in Clearwater, so I'm not going to even take three minutes because I understand that this is not about what you guys are going to look at next year, this is about the moratorium. I just want to really plead to the entire commission that this is a slippery slope, is what it is, because what you're, you're asking to do is, and, and I have my two shops, I'm not opening another shop in Pinellas County, so this is not about my ability to open another shop, but what you're doing is regulating a legal activity to then decide whether or not we want to allow it to happen, which all the pet shops are all about regulation. I, I've invited everyone who's sitting behind me to come and talk to me, I have my own private vet, I represent 98% of her medical practice. I'm not, my place rivals most veterinary offices. We are regulated by the scrutiny of the public eye. I'm not against regulation. Again, I'm not opening another shop, I have, I have my two shops, but it is a slippery slope, and I think everyone needs to consider that, and that's all I had to say.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate that comment.
Absolutely.
Tom De Silva? And then Laura Weiss?
And even, Tom De Silva in Sarasota County. Puppy mills are a disgrace, that we as a society should do everything in our power to put an end to it, and pet stores that sell animals are also the greatest supporter of such a business, because they sell animals everywhere in immense numbers, thus creating a big market for those puppies, mills all over. Banning the resale, sales of animals in those pet stores will cause the unregulated breeding of the dogs to lose its big market and eventually making puppy mills even go out of business or diminish. No doubt, there are other venues where puppy mills are selling the animals they breed, but pet stores like Petland and others like them are the main source of why these puppy mills continue to thrive. We as citizens have an obligation to treat domestic animals companions with decent care and responsibilities. They are not a product, a commodity, or even properties. They are living beings and deserving of our respect. By now, we should be horrified that every year about 3 million shelter animals are euthanized in our country, even those, because those shelters are beyond capacity and not even, and not enough adoptive homes. Pet stores that sell animals adds to the already massive problem of overcrowding in shelters and in rescue group organizations. They must be stopped from selling alive. I ask you that this county join with others in realizing that this is one of many offenses to our humanity. One offense that we can end is set legacy and start a more responsible one. Our domestic furry families deserve better from us. I don't have time here to tell you the most horrific stories about what we do to so many animals, the suffering because of our uncaring ways, but if you have the courage, I urge you to search the internet about puppy mills and the alarming number of healthy dogs and cats that are being put to death in our shelters every day, being abandoned to the streets and so on. And finally, animal lives aren't supposed to be sold like products for sale in some store shelves. Please join all the counties who are doing the same thing, and thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Laura Weiss? And then Cynthia Khan? Good evening.
Hi there, Laura Weiss, I'm your neighbor from Manatee County. I'll make this short, I'm here to encourage the commission to adopt a moratorium on allowing puppies' sales into the county. I want to encourage you to contact the City Commission of St. Pete because they banned the sale of puppies in their city. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Cynthia, Cynthia Khan, and then Carlos Gonzalez, or Goncalves, I'm not sure, yes?
I'm Cynthia Khan from Sarasota. When elected as commissioners, maybe you did not know you would have to know everything about everything, and I'm sure you never imagined you would have to learn about the scam of the puppy store business. By giving the county a moratorium on new stores, you will give yourselves the opportunity to learn and get the facts. Once educated, you will be anxious to ban these sales from the county, and you certainly won't want to grandfather in a business proven to be a scam on your public. You will get to see USDA government documentation, you will hear how your constituents have been scammed and cheated. For now, simply Google puppy mills and you will learn what your surrounding counties have learned. Retail store puppies are not born in cardboard boxes padded with clean towels and blankets next to a warm hot water heater in someone's garage. These puppies come from concentration camps known as commercial dog farming, under the most savage, disgusting, abusive, filthy situations that humans could ever devise. Ending the retail sale of puppies in surrounding counties, Hillsborough, Sarasota, Manatee, De Soto, and Orange County, has left Pinellas County vulnerable to becoming the puppy mill outlet capital of southwest Florida. Not an admirable distinction and not something you would want to put on a vanity license plate. I recommend the commission take the time with this moratorium to discover what your neighboring counties know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cynthia, appreciate it. Carlos? And then Melissa Cepeda?
Well, good evening, I actually came here just to support the moratorium, but I can tell you that in my experience.
Your name, your name and address, please.
I'm sorry, Carlos Goncalves, 1268 11th Street, Sarasota, Florida. So as a previous resident of New Jersey and then Maryland, I personally witnessed and walked into, because I'm an animal lover, I have dogs, I've had cats for years, and they've all been rescues, and I personally have witnessed the condition in two specific stores on the way the animals were treated. Now, I'm not speaking to anyone that has a pet store here, I'm sure they love animals, but I have personally taken part in the closing of a store in New Jersey and then another one in Maryland, which in turn turned out to be an SPCA store. The conditions were deplorable, the crates, they couldn't walk because they were metal cages that they, they couldn't even stand on, they didn't have anything to lay on, they were in feet, they were covered in feces, and it was just deplorable, and my heart just went out to these animals. And so that's when I became really involved with the Humane Society here in Sarasota now, I've worked with animal rescues, and it really just, I find it very important to be here to support the moratorium, it's just really important to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Melissa Cepeda? And then Genevieve Pettyjohn?
Happy holidays to you all, and thank you commissioners for your service this long, long evening to hear your citizens. I support the moratorium because I think we need to phase out the retail sales ban because it supports puppy mills and contributes to our pet overpopulation. Thank you for considering this moratorium to create a pause to allow you all time to learn how many of your citizens will support a phase out and to also learn and see how pet stores support puppy mills. While this commission is trying to, is considering this pause, what is perplexing is why just days ago, one of the pet stores here in this county decides to open up a second location days before this commission acts on this moratorium issue, seemingly disrespecting this whole process. Whether it is an act of bad faith by the pet stores, I will leave it up to the commissioners to decide. In light of the pet stores' actions, however, to beat the commissioners' moratorium decision, it is more clear that a moratorium is necessary because it is evidence that the pet stores cannot regulate themselves and cannot be trusted. Granting the moratorium, like I said, will demonstrate, will give you time to demonstrate how many citizens care about this issue, you have five stores, but I can guarantee you, you have thousands of citizens who will support a phase out. At a puppy mill, hundreds of breeding dogs will spend this Christmas and every Christmas for the rest of their lives confined in cages. These hundreds of breeding dogs will never be adopted by a family, they will never see the inside of a home. That is why this moratorium is important, please pass it, and I look forward to future discussions on the phase out of retail sales. Thank you all very much for your attention and happy holidays.
Thank you, Melissa. Genevieve Pettyjohn, and then Sunji Schwartz.
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. So I came here with a different speech in mind because we now.
Yeah, give us your name, please.
Oh, sorry, Genevieve Pettyjohn Seminole. We have a different platform now, so I'm going to be fast. I am just a regular citizen that helps with rescue of all different animals, but mostly domestic rabbits. So what we see in these pet stores is our usually cute little tiny baby rabbits that are being sold to people that are uneducated, and then once they realize that these pets are not easy, they get thrown out or a rescue or a shelter is looked into. So very quickly, I just want to say, I hope that this moratorium will give you time to look into the overcrowding of these rescues and the shelters. One of the shelters right now, the SPCA of Tampa Bay, is having a completely free wave event, so every pocket pet, rats, guinea pigs, rabbits are all free until the end of December because they are so overcrowded with them right now. So I urge you to look into the overcrowding of these rescues and these shelters, they are at an all-time high, COVID has really done a number to them with the people returning them. Please speak to the rescues and the people that run these rescues and shelters. I think that it's really important to see where these animals are coming from, and most of them are from pet stores. So again, I think putting a pause on this and passing this moratorium will give you guys time to really look into those things. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Genevieve. Sunji Schwartz, and then Allison Santiago?
Allison, left.
Okay, thank you. So Sunji Schwartz, and then Dawn Lad would be our last speaker.
Hi, my name is Sunji Schwartz, I'm from Holiday, Florida. Rabbits are not easy to care for pets that are advertised in stores. They require a very specialized diet, a lot more space than the rabbit cage is sold in the stores, and since they are considered an exotic pet, they need to see a specialist trained in rabbit medicine. Yet they are often bought as an impulse buy only to find out that the rabbit's needs far exceed the expectations of the new rabbit owner. Around three to four months of age, rabbits hit puberty and become unruly teenagers that forget the litter box habits, start spraying, or become aggressive. Spaying neuter costs can easily exceed $300 to fix these unwanted behaviors. Children especially lose interest in the rabbits quickly, and the rabbit is deemed a burden that has to go. Additionally, rabbits sold at stores are usually sold so young that determining the sex of the rabbit is difficult even for an experienced veterinarian. It is not unusual to purchase two rabbits the owner was told to be the same sex, only to wake up one morning to find the rabbits have multiplied. Since rabbits can get pregnant as soon as they give birth, there's a chance that this family of rabbits will further increase in another four weeks. Finding a new home is difficult, and surrendering the rabbit to a shelter is often associated with additional expenses the owners don't want to incur, so the rabbit is turned loose. However, pet rabbits cannot survive in the wild and will succumb to illness or predators quickly. There are nine major rabbit rescues in the state registered as corporations and nonprofits, all spay and neuter rabbits to prepare them for adoption. In 2020, approximately 750 rabbits were adopted throughout the state. This number could be higher, but most rescues operate at or near capacity at all times and turn away or request for help. Some rabbits, some rescues even only pull rabbits from shelters prior to euthanasia. Rabbits that rescues across the state frequently work together to place large numbers of rabbits too. The Suncoast House Rabbit Rescue, which is the rescue I am with, focuses its rescue efforts on the Suncoast part of the state, reaching from Pasco to Sarasota counties. A considerable amount of stray rabbits do come from Pinellas County. We were incorporated as a nonprofit in 2019 when the need for another rescue in this part of the state became apparent. The number of intakes is on pace to double this year, and the trend is accelerating, especially with the end of COVID restrictions and the increase that rabbits are no longer wanted. So please, I support this moratorium, please include rabbits, especially in the future considerations of a complete retail ban.
Thank you, Sunji.
Thank you.
Dawn Lad? Dawn Lad? And that, that was the last person I have, I hope that I didn't miss anybody. Oh, whoops, apparently I did. All right, let's go, we've got some, we have four, three Zoom and one by phone call, so go ahead, Kat.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yes, I have four people online for this item. The first person is Ms. Hillary Hart. Ms. Hart, your hand is already raised in the Zoom application, we're going to ask you to unmute on this item. Once you're unmuted, if you could state and spell your name for the record, state your address, you will have three minutes, thank you.
Okay, my name is Hillary Hart, I'm a veterinarian in Pinellas County in St. Petersburg, 615 10th Avenue Northeast. I'm a mobile veterinarian, and I was asking you to support the moratorium of any new retail puppy stores coming into Pinellas County and not to grandfather in the six existing puppy stores during further discussions in 2022. I also wanted to address an issue that was concerning to me, there is a puppy store, so one of my clients recently purchased about two months ago a puppy from a puppy store in Pinellas County, and she was not given vaccination records, she was not given a health certificate, and by law, that is required, and even after speaking to customer service, emailing, making numerous phone calls, we were not allowed, we were not able to get that information on the puppy, so we had no idea what the background was. Fortunately, the puppy was healthy, but it took a phone call to Pinellas County Animal Services to get that information, so I just, you know, want, to me, I feel that, well, why did it take that long? And then was it an authentic health certificate, or was it something that was, you know, falsified? So if it happened to this one senior citizen who spent $3,100 on a puppy, it has to be happening to other people as well, I'm sure this cannot be an isolated case, and why were we given the runaround? So that's one issue I wanted to bring up. The other issue was about banning the sale of rabbits. As a veterinarian, I think that the people who are buying. As a veterinarian, I think that the people who are buying rabbits for Easter for their children, you know, when they're small little bunnies, they think they're cute and it's more of an impulse buy, but as they grow up, they're unwanted. I would say two-thirds of the rabbits I see end up living instead of being house bunnies. They end up living outside in tiny cages with a multitude of health problems and end up either being just left out there until they die, they're sick, or they get turned in or abandoned, turned into animal shelters or rescues. And as already discussed, the shelters are overloaded, so most of them end up euthanized because there's not enough homes. So, you know, and then in terms of puppies being sold in pet stores, we already have a severe overpopulation problem. So, you know, I think it's very concerning to me because of everything I see, and it's very heartbreaking. And it's not only that, it's also, you know, you know, it's very inhumane, rabid, getting back to the rabbit issue.
Dr. Hart? Yeah, your three, your three minutes are up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hart. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Mr. Tom Gorgon. Mr. Gorgon, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application so that we can unmute you on this item. And then once you're unmuted, if you could state, spell your name for the record, state your address, you will have three minutes, sir.
Tom Gorgon, 11585 65th Avenue, Seminole. And I urge you to approve the pet retail sales moratorium before you at this meeting. The health and welfare of Pinellas County's animal population and the protection of their owners as consumers and loving pet parents are important matters under the jurisdiction of this commission. They will be better served by approval of the moratorium. What is being requested today is a moratorium on the expansion of retail pet sales. This will allow county staff time to conduct necessary fact finding in order to ensure humane treatment of our animals and the protection of our consumers. The moratorium does nothing to curtail the ongoing operation of existing retail establishments during the time it will be in effect. Therefore, it does not disturb existing businesses, it simply prevents our circumstances from deteriorating during the fact finding period. My concerns are related to the conditions sometimes faced by the poor animals sold in retail pet stores, and also how the purchase of unhealthy animals will impact other family pets and their owners. Some commercial animal breeders operate on sanitary and inhumane breeding facilities where proper care for the health and well-being of dogs is not maintained. Conditions may include overcrowded cages, little time for recovery between litters, underweight pets, and insufficient access to veterinary care. Additionally, some retail pet stores purchase their animals from these commercial breeders with unsanitary or humane facilities. To the extent that these allegations have merit, it is our duty to prevent our pets and their owners from unnecessary suffering. The Health Society, I mean, the Humane Society recommends never purchasing a puppy from a pet store due to health, safety, and animal welfare concerns. There are other health-related methods for adopting pets than purchases from retail pet stores. Animal shelters have many pets available for loving homes. Small, reputable breeders provide the ability for prospective pet parents to examine the conditions under which their new family member was raised. In a related matter, I ask that the commission consider banning rabbit sales from retail stores. Rabbits tend to be purchased for Easter and then abandoned. This moratorium is necessary at this time because as neighboring counties adopt regulations regarding the retail sale of pets, surrounding counties have received an increase in requests for the opening of new pet stores. It is appropriate for us to study conditions before our county is overrun with applications and we become the marketplace for practices unfit for anywhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
The next speaker is Ms. Elizabeth Olson. Ms. Olson, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application to be unmuted on this item. And then once you're unmuted, if you could state, spell your name for the record, state your address, you will have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Olson. I'm in Palm Harbor. I just wanted to say good evening, commissioners, and first of all, I want to thank those of you that I spoke with a few months ago by conference call on the retail pet store topic. I'm very happy this moratorium is on the agenda because yet another pet store has opened up since we last spoke, making six now in Pinellas. Every other surrounding county has banned retail pet stores, as has 14 counties and 61 cities in Florida. So I am for a full retail pet store ban in Pinellas County and for not grandfathering in the six stores already in business. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
And then, Mr. Chair, our last speaker is coming in from the phone line. It's Ms. Catherine Infanti. Ms. Infanti, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application by pressing star nine on your telephone, again, star nine on your telephone to raise your hand if you've joined us today. And then we're going to ask you to unmute. Once you're unmuted, if you could state, spell your name for the record, state your address, you will have three minutes, and you may need to press star six to unmute. And I'm not, there we go. I see you're unmuted. Can you hear us? Perfect.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Good evening. My name is Catherine Infanti, and I live at 6330 12th Street North in St. Petersburg. I support the moratorium. According to the Animal Rescue Site and Greater Good, overcrowding in animal shelters is at an unprecedented level, and this is absolutely true in Pinellas County, as we've heard tonight. And our local rescues are bulging, and county animal services is underfunded and ill-equipped to cope with the volume of dogs, cats, and rabbits impacting our area. These are animals bred in mass volume to feed retail outlets, and these stores are a burden to our community, and a temporary moratorium is the only start, is a good start to moving in the right direction. Residents are the ones donating and volunteering to cope with the impact of surplus animals to the area, and these are animals bred to make pet store owners rich. Where, where do they get so many animals to fill all the stores without the aid of puppy mills and breeding farms? Because I know legitimate breeders, and they don't generate enough volume to supply pet stores. Legitimate breeders don't sell to stores because they, they care about their dogs and their animals, and they, they care about keeping consistent, healthy, long-living lives. Now we have six stores to put a strain on our county and our resources even further. These stores are flooding our area with more animals, while local rescues are forced to euthanize too many lovable homeless dogs and cats each year. Sick and diseased puppy mill dogs are dumped on local adoption agencies, and it's the rescues, the volunteers, and the adopters of this county who pay the tab by donating time, effort, and money to save and adopt out these growing surplus of animals. Pinellas residents are tired of footing the bill and seeing so many wonderful animals euthanized, and we're tired of seeing this problem grow. Other counties have listened to their residents and have passed bans already. Please step up, and please help the animals and residents of this county. I support a moratorium, I hope you will too, and I hope you will ban these puppy stores and do not grandfather them in. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
I do not have anybody else. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. And before we entertain any motions, I know the county attorney had something she wanted to bring up.
Yeah, I placed at each of your stations earlier this evening, some modifications to the language and the ordinance that we would like for you to include in any action that you may take. The language is not substantive in nature at all. It is simply a provision that provides precodification in the code, which is something that would basically convert your ordinance into a code as you, as what you normally see in Muni Code. So again, doesn't affect the substance of what's before you tonight, it's really just a procedural issue, and I would ask that if you do take favorable action on the ordinance, that whoever makes the motion include this amended language. I do have some extra copies, and I have provided a copy to the clerk.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
I would like, I would like to make a motion to approve the moratorium and provide for inclusion in the code.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Gerard. Commissioner Seal?
Yes, I had actually had a wonderful conversation on the rabbits, and I think it is something I don't want to include necessarily in the moratorium, but I would like it to be looked at because I think it is probably an issue.
You talk about rabbits? Okay, yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, I've come up with some things too, so we'll talk about that offline afterwards about things to look into, so I think that was a good, good thing to get us thinking that way. So we have a motion and a second for the moratorium, the one-year moratorium banning additional locations, additional owners, additional expansions of existing locations. It's all of that. We don't want larger sites, and we don't want more sites, and we don't want more owners in this year of moratorium. So, I'm getting the, yes?
Yes.
Okay. I'm looking past you, Barry, to Doug, so, okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and this meeting is adjourned.
Not before I would like to... Merry Christmas, happy holidays.